This meeting of the City National Planning Board, 15th of July, 2021.
Mayor Dottis, Mike Peterson.
President.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
Here.
Alderman David Tenta. Older woman Jan Schmidt. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Ed Weber.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And we have a forum, eight members.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting here. So, I'm reading everybody. My name is Scott Leclair. I'm the chair of the City National Planning Board. And again, this is the 15th of July, 2021, Planning Board meeting. This evening's meeting is, the planning board will be conducted in a hybrid format. Meeting is accessible in person in room at 208 at Nashville City Hall located at 229 Main Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, and via Zoom at the link posted on the publicly posted meeting agendas. Members of the public and representatives of the applicant have been encouraged to attend the meeting via Zoom. They may also be attending here in person at City Hall. Real-time public comment during the meeting can be addressed in the board utilizing Zoom or again at City Hall in room 208. If any individual has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3115. And they'll help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, being the methods I've discussed, we will go ahead and adjourn and reschedule the meeting. He's noted that the board will take roll call votes tonight. And the board and the planning department thank everybody for their understanding and patience. Okay, so first up, we have minutes in our packet from June 17, 2021. Anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at those minutes and want a motion as to whether they're ready for us to accept them in written or need amendments? Make a motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion of Mr. Robert to approve the minutes here. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Get a roll call vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Insane.
Maggie Harper, yes. Dan Hudson.
Insane.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And that motion passed at six to zero with two extensions.
Thanks a lot. Next up, communications.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. You should receive some of the emails and also in your packet tonight, there's a copy of the following correspondence. Regarding 306 Innovative Way, there is an email dated July 15th from Wayne Hudson. Excuse me, Wayne Hudson. And we have an email from VHB regarding 306 Innovative Way as well. It's a traffic information. And regarding 6 Kinsey Street, you received an email from the butter at 6 and 1/2 Kinsey Street from a Tessa Markey. We have an email from Tom LeCroy dated July 12th regarding engineering comments for 54 Chandler Street. We have an email from Matt Sullivan and Ryan Pratt regarding National Landing that they're only going to be proceeding with the seven lot subdivision this evening. And the two site plan applications are going to be continued through August 5th. We have a letter from Kelly Jordan Price dated July 14th from Gateway Allen regarding the National Landing project. And then finally, we have a letter from Sean Kelly from Vanessa Associates dated July 14th. Also regarding the traffic for the National Landing. And that's all that I have, Mr. Chair.
What about Chandler Street and A-14? I didn't think of what.
Forty Concord Street. They made changes to it, made it more appealing to the pass for the historical district permissions. And so it went pass.
Okay, thanks a lot. Hey. So first up on the order of business here is new business conditional special use permits. This is new business item 821 dash 0142, John D. Flatley Company owner. An application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to allow for 190 seat, including 70 restaurant use. Within unfortunately approved 10,500 square foot flexible use space for the properties located 306 Kinsey Street. So first up from the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Um, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion, this application is required for acceptance of jurisdiction.
All right, you have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? Get a roll call vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks a lot. Stand here for the.
Hi, Andy. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chad Grant. I'm a civil engineer. Fieldsville Land Consultants. Our office is located at 206 Almond Street in Melford, New Hampshire. With me tonight from the Johnny Flatley Company is Kevin Walker. And we are before you this evening seeking a conditional use permit to allow for a brewery slash restaurant to occupy building three of the flex buildings, which we were, which was originally approved by this board back on February 2nd, 2017. This project was actually last before the planning board on February 4th of this year. As we were before the board seeking the subdivision, basically breaking out the flex buildings from the remainder of the site. So the flex buildings do currently sit on a separate property at this time due to the approval of the subdivision at the February 4th meeting. Flex buildings currently sit on tax net parcel A dash 1022, which consists of, consists of 6.149 acres of land. And that property is located within Gateway Hills, formerly known as the Nashville Technology Park. Currently Gateway Hills encompasses approximately 400 acres and is a mixed-use development with office, research and development, retail, hotel, residential uses on the property. Gateway Hills is serviced by one public road, which is Tara Boulevard, and three private roads consisting of Innovative Way, Research Drive, and Digital Drive. The flex buildings that were before you this evening have direct front along Innovative Way, which is depicted on the plans that we have before you this evening. The proposal before you tonight consists of developing a building three, which is the easternmost building out of the three buildings into a brewery slash restaurant with 128 indoor seats and 70 outdoor seats, totaling 198 seats. The proposed facility will include the construction of a 2,500 square foot patio, which is depicted on the site plan that we have before you this evening. That's located on the south side of the approved building three. And this project does also contemplate reconfiguring the parking on site because behind the building, we're, instead of doing a number of loading days, we're, we're going to capture in some additional park areas within the approved limits of pay for it from the prior site plan. Spide Glass Brewing Company is the company looking to occupy the site. They're currently located at Two Towns and West in Nashua off of Amer Street. Taking a look at the site layout, the design of the site does provide for parking at the front and rear of the building. The parking spaces directly surrounding this building totals 50 spaces with loading and deliveries occurring in the back of the building. So very consistent with the original approval layout. The site could also share parking with 200 and 300 Innovative Ways if there was a need. Access to the building will be provided off of Innovative Way, which is again a private road. And the building will be serviced by municipal sewer, natural gas, pent-up water, and underground utilities. Currently, the site is actively under construction. So those of you that have been by the site may have noticed that. The parking areas and internal traffic patterns have been designed to provide return movements for daily use as well as emergency response vehicles and deliveries. We have not made any changes to the lighting plans for this proposal. They will be provided by a blend of pole-mounted and building night lights, as was previously approved on the site plan. As mentioned before, this site and all associated designs were approved by this board back in February of 2017. And a restaurant use without a drive-in or drive-through facility is listed in the land use code under number 114 as a permitted use by special exception in the Park Industrial District. So that's the reason we're before you this evening. We have submitted with the application the nine criteria that are required to be met for a conditional use permit. Those are outlined in section 190 dash 133F. And again, those have been formally addressed with the application, but we would be happy to go through all of those criteria if the board felt that that was necessary this evening. We are in receipt of and have reviewed the staff report for this evening's meeting. And we have no issues with any of the staff recommendations. This also includes the latest communications between the Department of Public Works, which I believe was mentioned about an email from Wayne Hudson and his recommendation of the $12,000 contribution for the Genoese Highway Traffic Corridor account. We are not opposing that and are willing to accept that as part of this proposal. So if the board would like, I'd be happy to go through the conditional use permit criteria or answer, answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I don't think you have to go over everything through the criteria to be able to fill the packet. Do you have any kind of idea yet on hours of the general framework of ours?
Yeah, I'll let Mr. Walker.
Kevin Walker and the Flatley Company. To start there, anticipating our theme, eleven to nine, eleven a.m. to max, yeah. Yeah. It's a fun service, dinner service. So they may opt to try to alter those hours once they're open and run it for a bit.
Okay. I assume this is all to the whole week. A weekend.
Yeah, yeah. And right now, I mean, they, they may tighten up the hours for shorter span during the week or maybe at the start of when it's open. And stay open before 11:00 and the weekends. Right now, I'm pretty much on 11:00 and 12:00.
Other question by the board? This question is for Dan. And he might, he might have already given the answer because of the corridor. Going back a long time, this Flatley has done a lot for the city of helping out with the traffic and stuff like that. But we've talked about then split-broke road problems that are going to continue to exist. And this has got a pretty good rise in the amount of traffic that's going to come out of this. Is there some point where we talked about a tipping point? Can you go over that and what's happening, going to be happening now? What's going to happen?
Sure. So, um, truck engineer Wayne Hudson would be the better one to speak to it. But we have talked in the past about various development proposals and what would trigger improvements. This is changing use and there was some traffic proposed previously, which will be, will offset some of the traffic proposed by this, this current use. So we asked the applicant to go through that and kind of compare and contrast. It ends up being a net 60 new trips in the PMP tower to the site. So, you know, we're split roughly 50/50 in and out. So it is incremental increase. It doesn't rise to the level that we would think that we would need new geometry improvements or anything like that. We have asked for a $12,000 contribution in the corridor fund, and that's to, you know, contribute towards improvements along the corridor. We talked before about, you know, needing to upgrade equipment along Split Brook Road and Genoese Highway. We're replacing the detection and we're improving coordination. We're have a plan to go into a process of revising, updating, coordinating time and plans and things like that. So this contribution is in line with what other developments have contributed on a per-trip basis and will assist with all those future efforts.
Do you think that at any point in time, future point in time, because this, it appears that it's almost totaled out as far as spacing for this, that Split Brook Road would need a third lane added to it?
There is a plan which we, again, we have reviewed for future larger development in the site, but to, to do just that, to add another lane in the eastbound direction. So there are, there are some future geometric improvements contemplated, but we don't view that this is the time or this is the thing that would trigger such a change.
Thank you.
Mr. Barley? I have this question for Chad. Some time ago, as part of the development here, we approved restaurant use. I think it's a different part of the parcel. But that was never restaurant, never occupied the space. Do you anticipate at this point, because I understand this is, I don't think this is placing, this is not the same part of the parcel. So is, is it still possible there could be another restaurant use here at some point in the future? Um, currently, it's a great question, Mr. Barley. So the restaurant site that was approved is located here on the plan on lot A dash 1015. And then the, the flex building is around here, just up the road and midway. That restaurant facility that was approved is now occupied by, I believe it's a medical, medical facility. So that use didn't carry forward. So certainly, you know, I think that was probably taken into consideration in the traffic review as well. Could a restaurant come back here, I mean, in the future? Certainly, but I think we would, we would land back before the community development office reviewing, you know, either an amendment to a site plan and potentially revisit the traffic again.
Great, thank you. One more. Um, for, it's great. If, if the restaurant wanted to change their hours to like, say, 2 o'clock in the morning, they have, you know, had a lot more stuff. Do they have to come back to the board or they can still go to another, you know, within the city?
If, if the board approves certain hours, say till 9, 10 o'clock at night, and then they want to stay open till 2 o'clock in the morning? And it's on the plan listed as like 10 o'clock at night, but it would require coming back to this board and ask how many hours amended?
Thank you.
Currently, there's no hour limitations on it. Other questions by the board? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and open up to the public, anybody in the room or anybody listening in. If there are any questions or opposition or in favor of a plan, go ahead and, if you're online, go ahead and you state your name and address for record. And let's be your question. So seeing anybody up there or anybody in here? So I'll give the board one last time. Any questions for the applicant or staff during the hearing?
In the past, when discussion of this large project came up, we talked about possibly putting in an extra exit or entrance ramp on every turnpike. Did anything ever happen with that idea to prevent like, you know, further congestion on Split Brook Road?
Right now, with the uses that we have out there, this obviously doesn't, doesn't require the ramp. There will be a certain point as the site gets further developed that we're going to have to entertain a second access out. We're not there yet. We also have plenty of room currently within the NTP Park, 100, 200, 300 Innovative. So we don't see building anything humongous out there. But I'm aware of anyway, something to come up tomorrow, something to come up five years from now. But nothing's on my plate right now, which is fine. So as, as it gets to a point where we need to look at that a little closer, we're, we're going to.
Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the end of it. So we have in front of us conditional use permit. It's pretty straightforward, it's like a reasonable use, as far as I'm concerned for the area. With hotels and stuff that are also in the area, so residential off the hill from it. So I think if anybody wants to make a motion, I just think that the traffic, or the, the contribution to the Genoese Highway Traffic Corridor probably should be taken away. You know, we probably won't have that on, I think there are two on there now. I guess the date of the letter, you guys have a wide second, is that still matter?
Uh, it will be July 15th, and then that would cover the contribution and that as well.
Oh, so if we just change it to the 15th, that's in there.
Yes.
All right, any questions? And.
All right. Barley, are you here? All right. So I would make a motion to approve new business project 821 dash 0142 conditional use permit. In that motion, we would define that the, the plan does meet requirements outlined in site plan and arrow section 190 dash 133F. And that approval would include two situations. Number one is written in the staff report and number two, to be updated in respect to the email, Wayne Hudson to change the date to July 15th, 2021.
Okay, so then we're going to approve by Mr. Barley, speculation is indicated through the second. Any further discussion by the board?
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up, we have new business site plan, DJBB Properties LLC. Again, this is new business, 821 dash 0142, DJBB Properties LLC owner. This is an application of extension, fully on your extension. Two 84 unit apartment buildings and associated site improvement, properties at 152 Temple Street and Hill. Anybody had a chance to take a look at this package and want to make a motion to take jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Okay, I move we take jurisdiction on project 821 dash 0129 site plan at 159 Temple Street.
Okay, so you have that motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Robert. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any, any discussion by the board? If we get a roll call vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero. Somebody on the screen? Michael Malonowski?
You sound like a call. We'll hold that and let's hold it down if we get further into the agenda.
Yeah, I guess we probably want to table it at the moment. So we've got jurisdiction, right?
Yeah, I think, I don't think we have the table yet. I mean, I think it's as long as we're still in the meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
So. So we go ahead and stick forward to new business site plan, 821 dash 0166. The National Housing Development Authority owner, Boston Capital Corporation, National Housing and redevelopment authority applicant. This is an application and acceptance of one-year extension to NR 1212, 41 Central Street. If you're in the board, have a chance to take a look at this and want to make a motion and sort of look at it.
Are they here?
They are here. Yeah, they are.
I make motion to accept new business project 821 dash 0166 site plan, 41 Central Street.
Okay. And is the intent that's heard with the subdivision, so the subdivision that will hear at the same time, it's a 21 dash 0151. Owner applicants in vocation. Let's take the motion first. We got committed on taking jurisdiction of our site plan. Do we have a second on that one? Second by Mr. Harper. May for the discussion on the site plan jurisdiction. Let's get a roll call vote on that.
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we get jurisdiction on that. And then likewise on 821 dash 0151, do we have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to take jurisdiction, new business project 821 dash 0151 at 41 Central Street.
All right, so there are motions to take into jurisdiction, 821 dash 0151. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Harper. Any further discussion on that?
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Scott Leclair.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Bob Ballinger.
Yes.
Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction on both of them.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. For the record, my name is Jim Petropolis. I'm a civil engineer. The Flanders Business, it's 3 Congress Street here in Nashville, New Hampshire. With me tonight, representing, I'm representing Boston Capital Corp, the National Housing and redevelopment authority. Richmond Zaki is with us from Boston Capital and Chris J. Leonard, our project attorney. Jay is here in case of these impressions that come up with that. I can answer. I thank you, Mr. Chairman, for taking the two cases together, 821, 166, and 821, 151. I'm going to do a very brief presentation and then, like I said, will be available to answer the questions. As just read into the record, we're really seeking true actions by the board. The first one is fairly, fairly simple. It is a one-year extension of the previously approved site plan. And then the second act is a kind of minimum subdivision, which I'll go into a little bit detail on. So first, let me present the extension as background. In August of 2020, the Nashville City Planning Board approved a site plan for the redevelopment of the Bronstein Apartment Complex. And I think many of the board members here this evening participated in that case. As an overview, the plan included the demolition of the existing Bronstein Development. Six buildings being demolished along with site improvements. And the construction of four four-story buildings for the total of 260 units. And the construction of four four-story buildings for the total of two hundred and sixty units. The detailed plans included a complete overhaul of the project and site features. Parking, driveways, and sidewalks, lighting, landscaping, ground, park, those were the two elements of the package. Several reasons for the request for the extension. You know, first, I think the inefficiencies of the COVID pandemic has really made the project difficult since then. Second, the complexity of the project itself. It was a challenging project. I think we communicated that evening to the board. We had residents to relocate, that was also part of that. So quite a bit of time that is in process, and it's my understanding they're close to being complete with that. And then the financing and the public-private partnership role details. So a lot of time. The project is anticipated to start in the fall of twenty twenty-one, so. The board should be aware that they have no changes to the plan or to the site since our action. In addition, our client understands that previous conditions of site plan approval will remain with this extension action. So that completes our request for the extension. And with regard for the condominium subdivision approval for the for the project. I want to explain it in this manner. First, condominium is being created essentially for financing. There are two lenders to the project, and each will use a portion of the project as their collateral. And that's the reason for the condominium. Fifty units in the first building, which is the top building, building A, will be retained by the Bronstein ninety percent limited partnership. And then the balance of the project, one hundred and sixty-six units, have to be owned by Bronstein four percent limited partnership. So condominium is being created for financing purposes. These are not units for sale, it is still an apartment development. And I can do units for sale. Commonly, it will be all the land outside the buildings and in the apartment. And again, the pain essentially is exactly the same for a site plan, so. That's identified in the staff report. The staff has recommended some conditions of approval. Those are acceptable to our client, so we're here to answer questions and we seek your approval for both requests.
Thanks. Questions of the applicant by the board?
Thank you. It just, is the, did the the financing change since the original approval? Is that what's driving this now, or was this? I'm just curious whether this was sort of contemplated at the outset, it just hadn't developed to that point, or?
I I think probably both. You know, I think that Rich and the team, redevelopment for he has discussions with the financing team, but I don't think it ever got to that level of detail. I will tell you, in the thirty-seven years I've been appearing before the board, Nashua hasn't really had a condominium action like this. But we're here tonight, and we understand that it's 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 part of the code review, so. Typically, we'll communicate in a project if it is to be a condominium. I guess we didn't do that, but probably was, it was probably known by by Rich and the team that that's the route just heading out there.
Right, so and and it will, just so I can, I apologize, I don't have the plan in front of me, but it will be, it will be two parcels, each one will get a separate condo parcel, is?
No parcels.
No parcels, yeah.
So no, no lines, if we call that plan back up, Pat, thank you, sure. And there's no lines, there's there's just elements, you know, portions within the building, within the board plan, that will be identified as one partnership and then the balance. All the documents that normally go with it tap in files in draft form. And it's currently being reviewed, so there'll be corporation plan on that.
Okay. So it's it's sort of, it's it's not a land subdivision, it's subdivision within the condo, right? Yeah.
Just, so does that affect those particular units as being affordable apartments on on market?
Mr. Ballinger? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does the nine percent limited partnership and the four percent limited partnership, do they have different partners per se, or is this purely a financing? Is it the same people? I just, I?
Yeah, as I mentioned, just Rich Mazaki, Boston Capital.
It's tight. For the record, Rich Mazaki, Boston Capital offices on Sixth Street in Boston. Now, in terms of the the partners for the four percent limited partnership and nine percent partnership, limited partnership, they're the same. Boston Capital and Nashville Housing and redevelopment Authority are co-developers, co-managers, and our investor partners, the same for projects.
Any other questions by the board?
Sure, thank you. Can can you describe how the this condominiumized setup affects responsibly for item of comments such as shared sewer services, that sort of thing, I assume that'll be covered in the condo documents, which will be reviewed by council?
So the, yeah, the everything in terms of utility costs and other, you know, common costs, maintenance, will be shared pro rata based on the number of units. So it's it's seventy-eight percent, twenty-two percent of it. And it's actually based on square footage, is the way we've set it up of the of the units.
Anything else to discuss there?
No, that's all, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess along the same line as Mr. Hudson's question. Would a pro rata distribution also apply to property taxes? This 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 application received quite a large property tax break, and obviously someone's gonna have to pay the balance, so is that also going to be split between the two partnerships, or? It is, yes, and that's that's covered in a development agreement with the city that we're currently finalizing. And each partnership will contribute. But, yes, so that's the, that's the way that works. Thank you.
Is there any control of your exit strategy for this project, you know, five or seven or every years down the road, if you people decide to sell? Where the, you know, the partnership decides to sell, has that an impact on the whole situation? Say, one of the buildings was sold, or it wasn't. Say that we're taking the property, so we have foreclosure or whatever else, how would that impact the whole situation?
Sure. Yeah, the the idea is that, you know, first off, Nashville Housing and redevelopment Authority will be the long-term general partner, sole general partner. After the property is stabilized, Boston Capital will exit the partnership. So Nashville Housing and redevelopment Authority will control that general partner interest. And the property, though, in terms of the whole period with an affordable housing project, its standard, industry standard, that will be held by those partnerships for fifteen years. So at the end of fifteen years, Nashville Housing and redevelopment Authority has a right of first refusal to purchase both projects. So again, ideally, what will happen in in a lot of cases like this with housing authorities, they will own it in perpetuity.
So they're in a controlled position, basically?
Yes, situation of majority owner of these partnerships, a general partner rather. But I assume the limited partners have a major role in it. They do, so each limited or the limited partners, again, are the same, same end investor for each partnership. There are different lenders, so the lenders do have collateral rights. So there could be a situation in a, you know, in a doomsday scenario where one lender forecloses on, you know, the nine percent partnership. And then they own this nine percent partnership jointly with the four percent partnership owners. NHRA and and the limited, unlikely, but that, you know, that could happen. Thank you.
Other questions by the board? At this point, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public, if anybody is in the public, either we're here or on Zoom call that have any questions on the plan or comments. Okay, not hearing any. With that being the case, I'll go ahead and any final questions by the board of planning or the applicant lower in the air? We're good, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. This will be on both applications, so we're at the meeting. As we're in the meeting now, so first up, the extension. Thoughts are, let's let's try to get this done. This is definitely positive thing for the city, so I mean, I'm in favor of obviously allowing the board, but that, welcome any discussion on that? Everybody want to make a motion on the, then on this first, which is these. Whoever.
Yeah. New business project eight twenty-one dash zero zero one six site plan to approve, finding it one-year extension with all prior conditions of approval.
It's with a motion to approve eight twenty-one dash zero one six six. The stipulation is indicated by Mr. Webber, we have a second for the board? Second, second by Mr. Barley, any further discussion by the board?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, and now with regards to the subdivision plan. This will be eight twenty-one dash zero one five one. Whoever?
On new business project eight twenty-one dash zero one five one condominium conversation, conver conversion subdivision, finding it does meet NRO one thirty-eight G with five stipulations as written.
Okay, so then motion by Mr. Webber to approve eight twenty-one dash zero one five one. With the stipulations as stated, we have a second. Second by Mr. Harper, any further discussion by the board?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Do you have the engineer for the previous application on the?
Okay. So let's look back, this is gonna be an application, it's a new business site plan, eight twenty-one dash zero one two nine. This is ZJVV Properties LLC, and this is that application and acceptance for both one-year extension for the two eighty-four unit apartment buildings, again, located at one fifty-two Temple and Hill, which we have taken this into jurisdiction already. So if we do have a a work the applicant that wants to present this, go ahead and start.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Malanowski. I'm with Allen and Major Associates. We are here before you to request an extension for a project that we had approved back in May of two thousand and nine for a hundred and sixty-eight residential units at one fifty-nine Temple Street, consisting of two buildings, and I will share my screen so that the board can sort of see what we've got going on. Just due to the economics of what's going on now in COVID nineteen, the developer hasn't been able to sort of get going on the project. So we are requesting an extension, one-year extension for the project and the current approvals on the property.
Okay. Just for clarification, is this the first one-year extension?
This is the second year, second one-year extension, sir.
Okay, thanks. Any questions by the board on the extension request? Go ahead, Mr. Barley.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if if you can, understanding, you know, the difficulty of of the financial circumstances over the last, you know, eighteen months or so. But do you have any sense of, you know, if if we were to approve this one-year extension plan? What is the likelihood that the development of the project could start within this upcoming one-year period?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information right now. We'd have to definitely discuss that with the client. But they have asked for a one-year extension presumably so that they can sort of get things order in order. The lot of the COVID restrictions and sort of the issues that have been sort of plaguing our communities relative to that definitely are on the downturn, so I anticipate that come early next year, that the owner would be able to proceed and sort of push the project forward.
Thank you. Other questions on the board? How many extensions, how many extensions are generally permitted?
So.
Is every continuously or?
That has come up before. There is no defined number in the land use code. However, the board has granted on other projects, of course, depending on the situation, up to three. And then they've asked that if they want to come back for another, and we'll have to come back for a full planning board review.
Yeah, generally speaking, Larry, you haven't been on the board for quite a while. I think we've definitely done two on several occasions. This one being, obviously with that COVID kind of a weird concern. But after several of them, what tends to happen is the board changes a lot too. You know, and the folks that are on the board now are not been involved in the plan, you know, sometimes you can't help that, because there's no basis for for understanding, but I think this plan has a pretty solid group of us that have been around for most of the time. Thank you. Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess another question for staff. Would would something else preclude that potentially if zoning changed? Obviously, the city's going through the master plan update. If there were significant changes to zoning, would that necessitate coming back? I'm not trying to be doom and gloom about it, I'm just trying to get an understanding of what the the likelihood is moving forward.
So zoning change would not force that unless the board feels that zoning change is significant enough to warrant a consideration of the plan? So I think you could use that as a factor in your decision as to whether the extension is granted. But should the board grant the extension, the decision is still protected on the original zoning that was in place at the time. But it it would be a consideration, I think, if you went from a residential to a commercial zone, and the project was no longer a fit within that zone, that may be something.
Yeah, and I would say that that has come up as well in past discussions about extensions. You know, to the extent there have been either changes in, you know, zoning laws or sort of changes in the surrounding circumstances of the plan. I don't know that there's been a case where we deny it, but, you know, on that basis, but it's definitely come up in discussions before.
Other questions by the board? At this point, I'll open up to the public, anybody in the room or on the phone or Zoom that has a question of the application or wants to speak in favor or opposition.
Mike, could you pull your screen down for a minute so we can see everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There we go.
Jim, I hear any? So go ahead and with the board, any further questions before I close the?
Some discussion?
For the hearing or for?
For this. My son is in construction, he's been working right along down in Boston, of all things, it's even tighter than it is up here. And so construction is really coming back, so we should not have a problem.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing, move on to the meeting, so that's been talked about. In favor of extending here, certainly has some extending circumstances going on at the, as we're talking, I'm not sure there's been too much development in that area that wasn't previously planned or of the flavor that was the plan was put together, so. But welcome any discussion? Amongst the board? Do we want to make a motion?
Chair? I would make motion to approve new business project eight twenty-one dash zero one two nine for one-year extension of the approved site plan. Finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan. Um, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan, arrow, section one eighty-eight, one forty-six D and one ninety dash twenty-three F. Um, and that is with a single condition, that all prior conditions of approval uh, are incorporated into this extension.
All right, during that motion, uh, approved, with the stipulations indicated by Mr. Barley, we have a second. Second one, Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, let's give a little vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
We just get the bottom five minute break here, we'll be back in a second.
Yeah, this is, this is.
Not a big chance of doing that.
That's.
This project, um, the latest letter that we have received is dated June twenty fifth of this year. Um, which addresses just some minor um items relative to providing a sidewalk easement along. Um, Kinsley Street along front of the property, essentially what the Department of Public Works is looking for is is an easement along. Uh, the front of the property as depicted on the plan so that they can maintain the existing uh landscaping along Kinsley Road, but. But still provide for a suitable sidewalk connection if they uh need to extend slightly on the property to to. Improve that sidewalk, so we have agreed to uh provide that easement. The other item in the engineering letter pertains to a um traffic contribution. Um, that contribution amount is uh been agreed to be one thousand six hundred dollars to the main street traffic corridor account. Um, so we are in agreement with that, uh we have gone back and forth a little bit with the Department of Public Works on that works on that, but. We we have no issues with that particular assessment. We are requesting one waiver uh with this application. This waiver pertains to section one ninety two seventy nine EE which requires um existing conditions of abutting uh properties. Uh, we did submit a formal waiver request letter uh for that section, um just in summary, we have. Completed a detailed survey of the site and all of the uh surrounding utilities. Um, and so we believe we've really satisfied the intent of that particular regulation and that we don't see any benefit to um. Providing existing conditions survey beyond of what we're showing on the plan, so we're hoping that the board will consider that waiver this evening as. Certainly any additional survey work would create a a financial hardship for our client and I could go into more details on that. So we do believe that um this project meets the um requirements outlined within the land use ordinance. Uh, we've worked with uh staff on addressing a number of items um throughout. The last few months as well as um comments from engineering and we have no issues uh with she turned staff and will per. So that Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to try to answer any questions that the board may have at this time. Okay. But but word. Um, couple of questions, first one, I know you mentioned. Both of us is landscaping at the front of the site. And it looks like there's currently, you know, it's 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 grass and there's a couple of trees in the back, is there any proposal for any. Landscaping around the parking area in the back? We're not currently proposing any additional landscaping along the park near in the deck, uh we are proposing. Uh, the construction of the uh stockade fence along the. Uh, portion of the eastern downbeat of the site, that was a a condition, I believe, of the zoning board approval for. Uh, convenience store on, you know, as part of their um approval and review, so that is. You know, some improvements to the rear of the property, but we're currently not proposing additional landscaping. Okay, and then there's, it looks like there's existing fencing on the rear of the lot and the. That's the rash and then the, that's the western side of the lot. That's correct, there is a existing stockade fence along the southern border and then I think that does extend just slightly along. That west um section and then there's um a forty-two inch maple tree along the west boundary and then there's some bushes. Along that boundary as well and then there's another um like a vinyl fence um that that ties into the existing structure as we work way back towards. Um, Kinsley Street. Um, and then I know we have a a letter from the butter. Here, um, to your question, one of the state, the hours of operation that I was trying to find on the plan, but. Is is are there hours of operation listed on the plan, as she says in the letter? Nine A to seven P M, Monday, Friday, nine A to five P M Saturday. Um, that's correct, it's note seven on the site plan, is that right? And um I did have an opportunity to review on the letter from Ms. Marquis, um. I think that a number of her concerns are really related to my client trying to obtain a site plan approval so that she can occupy. And further invest in the property, um but certainly we're not opposed to the hours that she references in her letter, because those are the hours that we'll propose. On our plan. And then just one last, if you could expand back out of the plan. Um, again, that's that same about our smart people, it's like it just, is it that she owns both of the. The western abutting lots, is that what that little arrow is signifying? Yeah, so she she brings up a a good point in her letter, um if you take a look at our site plan. What we're missing, so um SBA Global Partners LLC owns tax net parcel ninety-seven-five, that is an L-shaped parcel that extends out to Elm Street. Um, Ms. Marquis owns the property that is directly adjacent to us, so I added that black leader on the plan that I have before you tonight as a presentation. Um, that that leader for some reason got deleted on the plan that uh we submitted to the city, but we'll add that back in. Yeah, so that's just, I got, so that's just a reference to that. Correct. That parcel, okay, that's correct, and we we just kind of dragged it away so that the detail of. Her property and how that relates to our site could be, you know, um more visible on the plan, right, okay.
Other questions uh for the applicant by the board? Please, are there any? The stormwater improvements, uh please quickly open those again, what's uh short improvement.
So we're not making or proposing any improvements to the necessarily to the stormwater, because we're not proposing any additional impervious area. Um, all of the parking will be restripped on the existing pavement um on the site. So there's there's no change in impervious areas, so there's no change in stormwater runoff from what exists now. Um, all of the the act, all of the entrances to the building currently exist, all the accessways exist, all the parking exists. Uh, we're just kind of re um working the layout so that it works for this change of use, but it's all occurring within the existing.
There's no building changes, it's just a sense with restraining.
Okay, that's correct, there's no changes to the building proposed. And we did submit a letter um to the city that was reviewed by the engineering department and. I my assumption is that they were fine with it because we, that's not an item outstanding for us to address.
Other question by the board? Oh, Ms. Harvey.
Uh, could you please, so is is there pedestrian access to the building or?
Yeah, there's. There's currently a sidewalk along the front of the property here, uh but there's. Right in this location here, there's a, there's a maple tree that's kind of in the sidewalk pretty much, so the. So the city would like to maintain that maple tree and has asked for us to give them an easement onto the property so that. When they decide to do some improvements along the front of the site, they can, they can make some adjustments to the layout of the sidewalk to accommodate that.
Thank you.
Anything else for the board? Okay, here now I go ahead and open up to the public, so is anybody in the room here or? Uh, on the Zoom call that has any questions of the plan or wants to make a comment either for or against it, I'll go ahead and open it up.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name's Tessa Markey, I live at six and a half Kinsley Street, I was the one who uh wrote the letter. Um, I just have two questions, um, there is someone who currently lives on the second floor, um. Are there going to be certain spaces in the back for them, so is it going to be? Two spaces for two of their vehicles plus the nine that you're proposing? Um, and then my other question is if there's no rear access to the proposed um first floor. So when you have a truck coming to drop off goods, um are they going to just park on Kinsley Street? With their hazards on and potentially block my driveway and drop off their goods? Or are you proposing them or proposing a door be put in the back? Um, like a convenience store has for trucks to go in the park, the the parking lot and enter. Um, through the back.
Okay. Uh, all right, thanks, yeah, we can um have the applicant address that, any any other questions or?
Um, I just wanted to restate in my letter um that on no lawn maintenance has been done since. The building has been taken over by the new owners, um, the shrubs in the front are. About four or five feet tall and me and my family have been maintaining what I believe is to be a one to two foot patch of grass. That is connected to my driveway, um. That has overgrown weeds and like goes on to my driveway, so we've been maintaining that, so is that going to be uh maintained?
We'll ask that question as well. Any else?
Uh, no, I believe, I believe that's it, I mean, as long as it states in the, if it's approved, it states in there that the hours of operation are what's on the plan.
Yeah, those are definitely in there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concern, or have a question of the plan? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and uh ask the applicant maybe to address, um, there was three particular things I think that took notes on, one was um. Uh, parking for any second floor, uh your access, truck delivery, and then lawn maintenance.
I'm sure, so on the site plan, we do um call out the parking calculations for the project. Um, the convenience store component um requires six spaces. And then the residential unit requires two, so the site has a parking requirement of eight spaces and we provide for nine. Um, so we have taken into account the uh the apartment as well as the uh specialty store on site. Okay, as it pertains to um truck deliveries, if it is a um smaller um truck, they could access the site and turn around internally. Um, currently at my client's existing store, um she only has three parking spaces, I believe. So this is actually quite a bit more parking than what she believes is is necessary for her store, um but we do fall into. Um, you know, a convenience store category instead of a specialty store, so um we think there is ample um space on site. If there is a large um delivery truck that that, you know, happens to come. Um, and normally they can schedule to have a smaller truck, but if for some reason a large one um has to come, they would have to park. Um, west of the um Elm Street, Kinsley Street um intersection where there's on-street parking and they would have to uh truck. The um goods along the sidewalk to the store, um we have agreed um through a review with Community Development Office and and uh engineering. That um certainly no parking on Kinsley Street would be um permitted along the front of the site and that has been noted on the site.
And then I assume there's no parking in front of the butters there as well, yeah.
And the on-street parking is uh west of the on-street.
Yeah, okay, all right, and then uh can you talk about lawn maintenance and I noticed you're putting new landscaping in the.
Yeah, I mean, I think unfortunately the the reality um so far is that, you know, my client needs to get a site plan approval before she can occupy the site. Um, and currently she's um paying rent in two locations, which is, you know, certainly it it's been cumbersome. And so she's looking forward to occupying the site and and when she's there, I'm I'm sure she will maintain. Um, you know, the lawn appropriately as she'll be running her business out of this property, so um it's. I I can assure you through my conversations with the client that, you know, her intention is to get here and to and to get the site, you know, improved and and. And, you know, up to uh standards as soon as possible, okay?
Other questions by the board? So we're still in here. All right, uh, any questions by the board of staff or in the area? Then I will go ahead and then close it here. Um, we need to read it, so, uh, we have. Uh, a convenience store, an existing building, again, mostly just a parking and a little bit of landscape change. Um, some clarifications by the engineer on the the delivery, uh seems like a a good. Good point there and maintenance as well as uh the parking calculation being a little bit even above the to the requirements. Any other thoughts?
I I would just note for the the benefit of the butters that, you know, and I know we we talked about the sum, but there is a note on the plan. Um, for the hours of operation and it, this came up in um. Prior plan, if I would mention it, so given that those hours of operation noted in the plan, it would mean that the applicant would have to come back or for. If they ever decided they want to change those hours of operation.
Other um, I'm at the board. Hearing none, uh, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Sure, thank you, uh. I would make a motion to approve. Uh, new business project eight twenty-one dash zero zero four three site plan. And that uh motion would be with the finding that the site plan does meet requirements outlined in site plan arrow, section one nine dash one forty-six D. Um, and that will be the total of seven stipulations. Um, the first stipulation request is a um, I'm sorry, the first stipulation is a request for a waiver from section one nine dash two seventy-nine. EE um with respect to the requirement for existing conditions plan and that will be is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit of the regulation. And then stipulations two through seven uh will be as written in the staff report.
It's just that motion by Mr. Marley to approve would be uh seven stipulations stated, we have a second. Second one, Mr. Weber, any further discussion by the board? Okay, the whole vote, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Parker?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hertz?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, next up, uh, we have new business, this is a subdivision plan, this is uh eight seventy-one dash zero one three one. This is our. You know, Alex, three, four, five, is an application, we accept two lots, somebody just probably put a fifty-four chain. I'll defer to the board, um, anybody had a chance to take over this application, want to make a motion as to whether.
Make a motion that we accept jurisdiction of new business project eight twenty-one, zero one three one subdivision plan.
Does he have a motion to take jurisdiction, do we have a second? Second one, Mr. Hurry, any further discussion by the board? Get a hold on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Parker?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hertz?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction, uh, we should go up again.
Again, good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Chad Brandon, someone to handle this town land consultants. Um, our office is located at two oh six Elm Street in Milford, New Hampshire, um and tonight we'll be representing the um. Applicant Larry Kittle uh with his proposal for a two-lot subdivision, um the property is located at fifty-four um Chandler Street. Um, the total site consists of eleven thousand one hundred thirty-three square feet. Um, currently, the zoning for the property is urban residence, which has a minimum lot area requirement of five thousand square feet. Um, minimum lot width of fifty feet, um, as well as uh setbacks of ten feet for front. And seven feet for the side, twenty feet for the rear, um, this project was before the zoning board. As we did seek relief on the lot with a requirement, um taking a look at the existing additions plan. Um, you can see that the site does have an existing building situated on the south side of the site. Um, the driveway for that building is situated uh just south of the building itself. Um, and because of that, uh, the existing building does take up a lot of 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 width. Um, so the lot itself of that, if that existing building wasn't there, could meet and comply with um. The lot with requirements, so we did go with zoning board, we were successful in in obtaining relief from that. Uh, so the new lot will have a lot with forty-three feet, um and then we are showing uh with this. With the submission, a proposed uh single-family home to be constructed on the lot. Uh, we submitted with the application, uh detailed plans showing all utility connections to municipal sewer. Um, natural gas, potential water, um and their associated improvements to uh along Chandler Street, if you will. Along with the utility connections, as is typical uh typically required, um we did have to put together a stormwater management report for this project. Um, we showed in the uh stormwater management report that the site with uh some improvements. Um, can be constructed with with no impacts to any of the abutting properties. Um, this is done through the implementation of a collection swell along the north um boundary of the site, so essentially along this northern boundary. We are proposing to construct drainage swell, that drainage swell will be routed to a leaching um basin. Here in the north uh western corner of the project, um so everything is drains um to that area, in fact, the site itself drains. Um, back to that location, um so our stormwater management report shows that um the site as designed will mitigate. Um, all runoff through the one-hundred-year storm event, um meeting and exceeding um all the city standards. We are in receipt of a a review letter from engineering, um. I believe it's dated July twelfth, um which addresses some um questions relative to the site design. We have actually had an opportunity to make all of these revisions, um I think the 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 revisions were just submitted to the city, so we. We do not have another letter, but we have no issues with any of the comments that are raised in the uh July twelfth letter from. Um, engineering and the Department of Public Works. Um, I'd be happy to touch on, you know, any of those details as needed, uh but certainly we believe this site has been designed to meet and exceed. All city requirements, um, we did submit with uh this project, the uh typical traffic impact report and certainly for a single. Um, family lot that didn't meet any thresholds or require additional studies. And we are requesting uh one waiver for this uh project and that is of the requirement to show physical features. Uh, within one thousand feet of the um subdivision. As uh we typically do, we we certainly have detailed the uh subject lot and all of the uh surrounding areas as necessary to show that we can tie into all utilities. Um, and that we can comply with all the regulations, but we are hoping that the board would consider a waiver for detailing beyond. Um, those limits as that would certainly create a fin- financial hardship for our client, and we don't believe it would offer. Um, any beneficial data for this proposal, uh, so again, we hope the board will consider. Um, that waiver, I'd be happy to go into that in additional detail as well. If um board has any questions on that. We are in receipt of the um staff memo for staff report for tonight's meeting, uh we do not have any objections with any of the. Um, recommendations outlined, I think that the the um date on the engineering's letter would be July twelfth. Um, but outside of that, we have no other issues, so that, Mr. Chairman, under support, I'd be happy to try to answer questions. Um, maybe we have at this time.
Uh, any questions of the applicant by the board? Can you explain to the the line geometry, is it, is there like some? Reading that's kind of pushing that around or what's what's the field there, why not, straight?
Sure, that's it. Sure, so, um, basically, uh, what we're trying to do here is to go around the existing building and to meet the setback requirements. And then we, the the geometry of the lot in the back was actually laid out like that, just because we didn't know if we would need. Additional area for stormwater mitigation, um at the time, uh when we did the original subdivision, the the minimum lot size requirement is five thousand square feet. This lot is um is, I believe it's fifty-five hundred square feet in size. Um. Yes, it's a five thousand five hundred and twenty square feet in size, so in theory, we could certainly adjust that lot line back. Um, and, you know, we have about five hundred and twenty square feet to play with. So if the board felt that that was necessary, you know, we would be happy, you know, to make that change, but. That's the reason why we we showed it in that fashion, um, we just wanted to give enough room for any drainage improvements that would be necessary at the back.
And I want to play, you know, sort of kick there at the front of.
So the kick at the front is so that you need to, we need to front end.
That's just to get the front, so that one's really necessary.
Yeah.
Okay. That's our issue, we're just trying to get on the record why, why it was originally contemplated, so. Um, Mr. Weber?
Thank you, uh, is there any deep um notifications to the homeowner that's going to have that swell that uh who's going to be ma- how that's going to be maintained and?
So with the stormwater management report, um and certainly as typical with, um, you know, the city of Nashville, there will be. Um, stormwater management agreement and I believe that gets recorded with the plan, um so that will be referenced um in the piece. And and that would be the burden of the of the landlord.
Other questions by the board? I'll open up anybody in the audience who's in the street and others have a question, sure. Um, we can probably hear you there, it's on, you speak, you stay in the, in the address for.
I'm Nancy Dutil, and I own um sixty-four, sixty-six at Seventy Chamber. And um I really concerned about a few things um to show you on my phone. I deal with all the vegetation coming from over the fence and I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. And um it actually, so I try to maintain what comes through, but then it's higher than me and um I tried asking and they. Tell me, oh, yeah, yeah, we'll cut back and they never did, previous people, and I didn't know who bought it. And then there there was a mess in the front and then the thing that bothered me the most is. Constantly climbing up my building and going into my siding and having to deal with lines, so I'm hoping that it looks like it'll all get cleaned up. For that, but I'm worried about the drainage, um because we already have a drainage in the back of our property. It drains and with the gentleman behind us, so I want to make sure that nothing, I I just worry about what if this drain can't keep up? That they put in and the water comes on my side because parking is, you know, you know, so it's like it would take away parking. It were to flood and especially because it's seems to be located in the corner.
Can you show us on the map for your property something?
Okay, I'm right here, okay, so my catch basin is here, this gentleman here has one and it, we both have pipes where it drains. And hits a drain in the back of his property, so here I'm just concerned that if this doesn't keep up. That it starts to come here and I have parking here and parking on that side. Thank you. So that's pretty much, you know, um, I did see there's a pink ribbon on the fence, I don't know if you guys changing the fence. What what your intentions are from that, so I'm not against the project because it may improve the fact. But I do worry that once, um, if you if you have asphalt on the side. Right here and it doesn't stay like grass or something, that that will make more water problems, you know what I'm saying? I'm just worried about that. Pretty much it.
Okay, nice. Uh, anybody else in the audience? Wishing to speak in opposition, concern, have a question of the plan? Hey, you're no, go ahead and ask if maybe you can address a couple of things, vegetation cleanup. Maybe you can be a little more specific about the. Sure, particularly that for new house lot.
So, yeah, no, absolutely. So currently, there is no stormwater mitigation for any of the improvements that exist on site. So all of the improvements, with the exception of the small portion of the front yard that she drains the Chandler, all of it goes. To this back area, and the topography actually slopes back to this back corner. So any existing runoff makes its way offsite, whether it's to. The properties to the north or the properties of the northwest. And I think this really speaks to what the goal of the, you know, the city's engineering department is, which is when you're coming in. With a proposal that you, you know, do your part to mitigate any of the improvements that you're proposing. So what we, again, just to walk through the drainage design. What we're proposing is to capture all the runoff that that goes into this. It goes in this direction on the site. So this stormwater swell here will capture all the runoff from the proposed lot, house lot. And then we've also extended the swell along this rear line, which is going to capture runoff from the existing improvements on site. The site is essentially self-contained the way it's designed right now. All the stormwater runoff on site goes to this stormwater management area that we're designing. That stormwater management area tilts in. So we've essentially created, we've constructed a swell here and a small berm on this lower side. We've designed it to. Run through the hundred-year storm event, which is a very large, you know, stormwater function. That's been reviewed by the engineering department. They do have some comments relative to the design. They're very minor. Essentially, they wanted us to produce an additional test pit. Out here to prove that the soil properties are going to handle the design, which we we have done. There's, we haven't received a response from engineering yet, but we have performed that work, and we have no. Issues with the design, we don't anticipate any issues. So the site will be an improvement to the existing drainage conditions to abut in properties. Because of the fact that we're capturing some of the existing improvements as well as mitigating the proposed improvements. And that's demonstrated in our stormwater management report that we submitted where it shows. It shows a reduction in the rate of runoff, in the volume of runoff. Leaving the site in the two, ten, fifty, and one hundred year design storm. So that demonstrates that this site is not going to have a negative impact on abutting properties. I think the abutter's concern is valid, considering the existing conditions. And if somebody improved the lot without proposing stormwater improvements, that would have a negative impact on their site. So the concerns are valid, but the design addresses those concerns. And I think that, you know, certainly in obtaining a final sign-off through engineering, which we hope the board will consider as a. Conditionable approval to see what will satisfy that criteria. As it pertains to the landscaping, there is going to be substantial improvements on the site. And I suspect that a good portion of that overgrown vegetation would likely be removed. But I would, I would, I would think it would be a benefit to talk with the current owner. Suspect that they would be happy to work with you on removing some of that unsightly and really unproductive vegetation.
And can it be something that doesn't always? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, I think there can be, there can be some arrangement on, you know, maintaining, you know, maybe maintaining the fence and just eliminating some of the vegetation. That would go over. I can't speak for my client, but I think that's a reasonable. In a request that we can work with the landlord.
Okay, and is the design such that, you know, the intended of the proposed house to the lots to the north? That's like grass as well.
It's grass and no asphalt. No asphalt, yeah. The driveway is proposed on the front end of the site here. And so the only asphalt would be the construction of this driveway, which is really, you know, a short, as a, you know, as short as it reasonably can be. And then the house itself.
Other question by the board, Mr. Weber?
Thank you. This is for. Staff. See stormwater documents? And because of this, would a construction affidavit be in? Would have been, should have been in place, or is the documents going to take care of that?
Well, the stormwater is something that will be reported with the plan, and that the new owner will be required to to keep it clear. You certainly could add that if the board wishes the construction.
The only reason I'm saying that is because of her concern and the neighbors. This has a lot of runoff, so that it has to be built as presented, and that's the only way to do it is with a. As long as the applicant is amenable, that is a construction affidavit as built.
We're not opposed to providing, you know, oversight and providing a letter certifying that. Stormwater has been built per the approved plans. I would prefer to do that versus an as-built plan, just because that's, it's an easier task.
Usually won't be.
Yeah, I mean. Other question by the board, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, will there be a curb cut where the new driveway goes in?
Yes.
And follow-up question. What is the plan to bring in the utilities to this new structure, and where will the sewer line go?
Sure, so for two question, page two of the plan set that we submitted. Depicts the, all of the utilities really favoring kind of the north side of the site. Northeast side of the site. So we have, you know, the sewer and the gas close together, and then the water has to be ten feet from the sewer. So essentially, you have a, you know, a ten-foot swath that comes out to Chandler tying into those utilities. But that's where we're showing them on this northern portion of the site. And that has been, you know, reviewed by the Department of Public Works as well. They did offer some comments relative to the work of Chandler and how it has to be restored and so on.
So the public works department approved that you cut into the road and tie into those. Water lines, gas lines and such?
They, they haven't formally signed off on the entire design yet. That's, we're hoping that's going to be considered as a condition of approval like it often is. We've submitted the design. They offered some comments that are outlined in that, I think it's June twenty-fifth. Or excuse me, July twelfth review. And we've addressed those. We don't see any issues with their comments. We don't anticipate any reason why we don't obtain. Anywhere inside.
So go ahead and close the hearing into the meeting. So, you know, in front of us, lots of revision. Certainly talked a little bit about stormwater design. You know, it's certainly represented and submitted and reviewed by the city. At any point, there was a, you know, question about a construction control. You know, I think that the applicant is. Talked about that, but you know, if you really do want it, we could put it in stipulation. I mean, it is a catch basin and. So, I don't understand that that's, this isn't super complicated, you know? It's really, you know, something like, I think, even at the level of building inspection to kind of see whether it's done right or not, kind of thing. Versus having to stipulate another engineering review, but I welcome a little feedback you have on it.
Yeah, I I agree with that. The it is just leaching catch basin, so basically a catch basin structure goes in the ground, so it holds inside with. Stone around it provide ability for water to come in and reach out into the ground. So that's all it is. It's not very complicated, so I would agree. I don't know, I, I don't know as it rises to level of some of the more complicated systems that we would normally want that type of activity.
Yeah, there's no direct connect to the city storm system and stuff like that, that needs to be reviewed.
Okay.
Any other comments by the board during the meeting?
I have one, one comment in staff report. The latest. Engineering conversation by Tom McCroy, staff engineer.
Yes, the July twelfth.
Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion?
You say where you want me to?
I'll let you do it.
I wrote down some sort of. Okay. I would make a motion to approve the business project A twenty-one dash zero one three one subdivision plan. And that motion would be to find that the plan does require an outline subdivision arrow section one ninety dash thirty G. And that will have a total of eight stipulations. The first of those stipulations is a waiver request from section one ninety dash two to B nine. Requiring physical features, the site within a thousand feet of the plan. And that waiver will be, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit of the regulation. Stipulation number two is written in the staff report. Stipulation number three regarding. Satisfaction of the comments in the engineering letter will include the date of July twelfth. And that's an email from Thomas McCroy. Then stipulations four through eight as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Barley to bring with the stipulations as indicated to move a second. Any further discussion by the board?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, we have the landing in Nashville items. You have some correspondence on continuance. Can you just summarize where we're at with the request of continuance? I understand that there might be, I'm tired to pull in, at least try to take jurisdiction of a subdivision component. And maybe just for clarification, which one of the items is really bad?
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Chair. So just to provide an update on two site plan applications that have been from the board. One for the Costco is the script and the other for the true storage, both as part of the landing and Nashville project. We've been working diligently with city engineering staff and the applicant's team as well to. Particularly work through the traffic mitigation and traffic impact figures and also treatments that have been suggested by the applicant. We've had several meetings with the applicant's team and the city team and oil tanker as well. And we are working towards what I believe is a solution that the city will support by some real written correspondence as subsequent meeting. Additionally, we are working to finalize the drainage in relation to HDOT and HDS per in that drainage. However, on both of those items, we don't feel better in a comfortable enough place to support any kind of action by the board this evening. Nor comfortable enough to support any further conversation by the board without actual documentation in front of you. So we did work with the applicant, and they have agreed to request a continuance until the August fifth meeting. At which time, we do believe that further information will be available, and I would ask the board to take action on that this evening. The subdivision application that was previously in front of the board was a four-lot subdivision. And in subsequent conversation with the applicant and their interest being represented. They actually withdrew that initial subdivision application in favor of a seven-lot subdivision application, which is now on your agenda. I do want to allow the applicant to speak to that should the board choose to accept jurisdiction this evening, and we certainly do recommend the application is complete. But the change is really a technical one. There are no subs that changes to the plans as a result of subdivision. There are simply seven sets of lot lines rather than the initial set that were included. So again, on the site plans, we do recommend those be continued until August fifth, and we do expect to have. Real information available for you to review at that time, and subdivision, we will recommend is complete this evening. But would ask that the board, after some discussion, continue that as well until August fifth, to keep these as a package of applications together.
So. I think what we might do is just take the. Take motions on the site plans.
Right, sorry, just, just to clarify that, that what you're suggesting is that we would take jurisdiction on the subdivision plan, but but not. But still table that until August fifth and hear it with with everything, with it, or or hear it tonight, maybe. A table, tables for final decisions. That's absolutely right. Well, I would recommend that the board accept limited public comment this evening on subdivision only, simply because that's been already open for the other applications. But what I recommend is that after that, closing the public hearing or continuing the public hearing rather until the August meeting at some time, the board can take it up.
Okay, so what I think I'll do then, yeah, I'm going to go ahead. I'm going to ask for motions on the site plans, so for for the continuance to. Does anybody want to make those motions?
Yeah, I will make a motion as to both old business A twenty-one dash zero zero two nine. And old business A twenty-one dash zero zero six two, both site plans for the landing LLC. It's a pair of big agnost owner. One, the construction cell storage facility, one, also constructed Costco retail store or fuel station. That both of those be continued to the August fifth, two thousand twenty-one planning board.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Barley to continue A twenty-one dash zero zero two nine and A twenty-one dash zero zero six two. Do we have a second? Second one, Mr. Barley, any further discussion on that? Let's get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Thanks, and then we're going to head and ask the board to view page twenty-one dash zero zero two eight. Again, this is the landing of Nashville LLC care of the Agnost Board. It's an application, an acceptance proposal for subdivision. Forty-one point three one acre lot, running of a version of three existing lots. This would be two seven lots, again, the property is located two B script for the. I'm going to ask the board review that and let me know whether it feel like that application is ready for a substitute jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion that case number eight point one dash zero zero two eight is complete and ready for a substitution.
It's a motion to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second? Second one, Mr. Peterson? I think the only discussion that I would have, this should just be a direction for the applicant. We, I would recommend we just limit the discussion. Should this be voted through to. What the seven lot subdivision looks like and why the seven lot subdivision is being requested. And then the board can, you know, sort of move back and use that information as a full picture, so. But I'm going to go ahead and so any further discussion before we take jurisdictional vote? Let's go ahead and roll with the jurisdiction. Let's take our.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
All right, so we have jurisdiction. So I'm going to go ahead and open to somebody from the applicant or go ahead and present it again. Is that you, Brian? Let's present.
Great, thank you very much. For the record, Brian Pratt.
Uh great. Thank you very much. Um for the record, Brian Pratt with Boston O'Neill. My business address is fifty Commercial Street in Manchester, New Hampshire. And uh thank you, Matt, uh for giving a really good summary of where we're at with everything. As discussed, we uh had previously submitted a four lot subdivision and uh I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay.
Yep.
Um so previously, we had submitted a four lot subdivision that subdivides a lot into um a donation lot, which is uh planned to be donated to the city for a potential future train station. Uh the Costco lot here in the middle to house the Costco uh building. A gas station lot for the Costco, which is a separate lot. And then there was a remainder lot, which had um the self-storage and some future development on it. Um this is the four lots that we talked about, very minor changes. Um and the reason for those changes is um basically so the self-storage can be on its own parcel. We originally thought that there would be some sort of condo type development and that the self-storage could be on the same lot as some other uses. But um additional information has come out that that kind of needs to be on its own lot. So really, the um the bulk of everything has um pretty much remained the same except for this side of the development. So um the Costco lot, the gas Costco gas station lot, the donation lot haven't changed at all. It's just the remainder lot that we're now subdividing three additional lots on the south side of the building. So uh that's the self-storage lot, which is in the middle here, and then two future development lots. And then the remainder lot will still be, you know, potential future development. Um I do have this site plan with the lot lines overlaid, so you can see um, you know, the Costco sits on its own lot here. The gas station sits on their lot. The true storage will sit on theirs, and then there's a future development lot for some other potential development. Uh here, here, and then other development here, and then the potential future train station could go um on the north. So uh very minor, no changes, no physical changes to any pavement, um drainage, any utilities. It's all just uh just adding some indivi- uh you know, invisible lines um to the plan. So that's about it. Um I can go into some more detail if you'd like, but um I think maybe just um take some questions and and we can delve deeper on specifics if anyone has any questions.
Okay, thanks, Brian. No, I I I think, you know, I think it's pretty clear. So that it's really the separation of lot lines over in the self-storage area of the of the overall plan that's that's changed a little bit. So, okay.
Yep.
A question by the board for the uh on this, Mr. Ballinger.
Mr. Chair, yes, this is a a pretty benign question, but um is is Alexander's Boulevard the internal road? I I don't recall seeing that previously named.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the question by the board? Uh anybody in the public have a question? Uh we just say your name and address the record.
Uh doing both Frank Sabers, District Manager. Um where exactly is our property, our building on that map?
Uh Brian, you go ahead and point that out.
Is it on the other side? Is it on?
I missed I missed who uh what business was it?
Sabers. It's just the brown roof to the left of the best line.
Yeah.
Yep, Sabers is right here.
All right, so that's behind our property. Um doing businesses, we currently exist doing business. Um that area, we collect a lot of trash and a lot of stuff that comes from across the other plaza and other properties. Is there gonna be like a fence line or something in there to to prevent that? Because we're gonna have all kinds of problems with Costco and everybody else when that blows down the hill. And my other question is, is there a fence or something to prevent any debris from going into the river? And including that area at all?
Yeah, I think we can kind of limit some of it. Those are mostly site plan questions and the site plans are not open. Um I think it's probably, those are reasonably benign questions, but I think for they're they're not specific to the lot lines. Right now, we're only talking lot lines, right? And they're just the other plans I gotta open at the next meeting again. We're talking about the configurations of the plan. But I think in interest of your time, I think it's okay, Brian, if you want to respond to those two questions.
Uh sure, yeah, so um the first question, uh you know, there's a there's a railroad that separates our property from the river. And then there's a pretty significant buffer. Uh there is an existing fence. Um I I believe that the fence will be uh either saved or replaced. Um Matt uh Bruton from BL Company, are you on? Are you able to?
Yeah, I mean, I I think I think just your general intent is okay right now. Again, this is really site plan related services. So I mean, I
Okay.
I think you've got the feedback from the dub butter that they're interested in that, so.
Okay, we can we can definitely look into that and verify.
Same with the top of the hill. There's fencing up there currently.
Um yeah, so uh there's a there's a pretty steep embankment from uh Sabers coming down to our property. So uh everything like up at the top and and most of the hill is up on the Sabers property. So if there's a fence or if they want a fence up by there, the pavement is on their property. Um we don't have the ability to do that. Um Matt, you know, uh Matt Bruton, you know, is there a proposed fence down by the road at all?
Yes, there is a retaining wall that will go along that new ring road and there will be a fence on top of that. So um it will be at the bottom of the embankment compared to the Sabers, but there will be a fence line between the Costco Road and the Sabers development.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
All right, at this point, um I don't want to get too deep into the site plan stuff, so. Um any other questions or any other comments by anybody in the audience regarding the lot lines and the uh subdivision? Again, just so everybody in the audience knows, the site plans are intended to be heard on August fifth, so.
Brian, could you take your screen down just for a second so we can see?
Yep.
I don't see any.
Okay. Uh any further question by the board?
It's one handed.
There is one handed.
Oh, that's sorry.
All right, so I think the intent here would be for the uh for the board, so you take a warning to continue this application as well to August fifth is still the date for the call to you.
Yes, that is correct. It will be August fifth at seven AM.
So anybody want to make that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I would make a motion to continue uh new business case number eight twenty-one dash zero zero two eight. Um landing in Nashville LLC care of the agnost owner. Um uh proposal to subdivide uh forty-one acre lot. Um and the motion would be to continue that until the August fifth, twenty twenty-one uh national planning board.
All right, so then motion for continuance by Mr. Barley. Do you have a second? Second by Miss Sartor. Any further discussion? We can roll over on that motion, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Will that? Will that be uh in person or is that gonna be via Zoom?
We we will offer hybrid options. Uh Brian, I'll coordinate with your team and advance the meeting to make a suggestion perhaps, but we'll offer both.
Great. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Good. Thank you. Uh next up, other business. Um review of tentative agenda. I'm trying to compare with the tentative agenda. What do you suggest that we got?
Uh uh reviewing the tentative uh technical review, uh there is no uh regional impact.
Uh so you wanted by Mr. Weber for uh review of the tentative agenda. We're going back. Can you have a second on that? She's in the discussion. All right, let's get a roll over on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, um so we're at discussion items. Um I'll start with uh Mr. Ballinger.
Matt, what what materials do we have from the landing that are still viable? And I guess I'm trying to figure out how much I need to carry these around.
So uh I staff are going to cringe when I say this. I mean, I think we should likely provide you with a brand new package in advance at the next meeting of all the most updated materials. I I I certainly would encourage you to maybe put the old materials in envelope and put them somewhere for now, but we will provide you with new materials. The reason for that being that we do have new off-site plans. We do have new plans that we've not yet provided to you. We have new uh drainage to some extent, new traffic. Um so I would plan for a new package to be provided to you, but please do put those aside. You don't need to bring them to every meeting unless otherwise indicated.
Quick follow-up, Mr. Chair. I I know this can't always be prevented, but it looks like there's now a third or fourth party reviewer involved representing another entity, um BJ's. I I I'm trying to, for the benefit of everybody, if they're dumping materials the day before the meeting, is that gonna give everyone enough time to adequately review? Is there gonna be another doctrine on August fourth potentially?
So that's a it's a great question. It's it's possible, simply because we have put the comment period the day prior. Um I can certainly reach out to the both Ben Ass and Ingley Allen, who are representing BJ's and ask if they perhaps submit their materials earlier to the board for your consideration. I think they have the right to submit them late up until the twenty-four hours before the meeting. But I I too share the frustration. I think everybody does. Simply don't have enough time to review those in advance of the meeting. Uh so I'll I'll at least try to communicate that so we'd like them earlier.
Yeah, just uh relating to the to the materials that we did receive in advance of sites meeting. Obviously, some of the comments from Ingley Allen are sort of technical issues about interpretation zoning ordinance. I'm just wondering if if um Corporation Council is reviewing those comments, whether we'll have any feedback from them in advance of the next meeting?
You are unlikely to have feedback from Corporation Council on zoning. And the reason for that is that we've already consulted with Corporation Council on zoning. That was the reason for my email. It was included in the last board packet that we should include to you again, related specifically to how relief is granted by a site suitability report. I will provide that again. It does not have Corporation Council's signature on it, but it was something that was reviewed in detail with Corporation Council. Again, it's unlikely that we'll get a letter edit response from the department, nor have we requested one.
No, and that and that's fine, as long as we you're saying you've gotten their input. Yes, that will have that, the benefit of that in the back. That's fine.
Yeah, so we've had we've had substantial discussion with the applicant about, I I don't want to go into too much detail, but about, yeah, those zoning, those zoning issues that have been raised. Okay, yes, thank you.
Go ahead. Uh on um if they decide, you guys are really great at this. If if there's a lot of technical stuff that we get concerned about, well, I will. Wait, you can always tell the applicant that there may be a good um there might be a problem as far as we may not accept it at that time. Because there's too many technical issues that we fully can't accept, you know, take jurisdiction. If there's really stuff that isn't there that we're not we're concerned about.
I'm gonna discuss what's being talked about here in general terms.
Yes, please, always.
We s- we certainly have a a period whereafter public comment cannot be submitted for the board packet or as part of correspondence. But there's nothing to prevent a representative of the butter from coming to a meeting and bringing a piece of correspondence like what has been provided to you. So I I am very uncomfortable refusing a piece of a letter or any documentation in advance of the meeting. And so that's why we sort of default to provide it to the board. I do think it's perfectly justified for the board to say that we have not had time to review this and do not have the ability to consider it this evening. But it gets challenging for staff to refuse the correspondence under our state ninety-one. I just want to explain that dynamic. It just it gets tricky if we withhold information and don't provide to you.
Oh, that's not what I meant.
Oh, understood. Understood.
It's it's if we tell them that if they come in with really late, there could be a possibility.
And and I think they are aware of that. And I think what we can do is coach them on getting their information in earlier to ensure that the board gives more consideration to the information that they're submitting.
Yeah, and I I mean, I certainly can hold the board to see whether people are right. I mean, that's part of the chair's ability to kind of determine if if folks have had adequate time. You know, that's a board thing, not necessarily a staff thing, so we can try to do that.
Okay, another discussion I
Go ahead.
Um as you know, I'm um the Nashville Regional Planning Commission, I was on that board. And Harper is is said she'll go on to it, so that's something for you guys to consider. There's still the Historical District Commission. And I find that really, they have some really good stuff that's coming about and trying to get more jurisdiction of the different places or in within the city and not just the historical district commission area. And so we're trying to do something. So there's two things there. And I had a great time on the Nashville Regional. And a lot of information is and I had a great time here.
Does it the Historic District Commission, does that does that have to be a member of the planning board on that? Yeah, it's interesting. I was I was thinking about that as Mr. Weber was speaking. I I may need to go back to the board on that. I'm not sure if there's no, or because maybe I still do that. I believe one of the members don't seem to be a planning board representative.
Yes, yes, that's yeah, that's what was told me when I started. But I'll confirm the bylaw too. I'm just gonna back to everybody. The only reason I did both, I love, you know, but I also worked on a lot of the historical buildings in Boston when I did it, so I thought I could really contribute.
But uh one thing I think we should bring up for the board's future consideration being as tonight is Mr. Weber's last night. Uh we're gonna need people to think about dumpsters. Handicap access and a survey highly reflective road. So think about that.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Weber, for all your excellent service.
What I I have tried to, what the ex- staff has come around to doing is we've gone all over some of this stuff. And now um staff is already doing these things and taking it pre, you know, active role in 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 telling the people this is what needs to be done ahead of time so that we don't have to catch it.
You educated the staff.
No, they educated me. But there's a, that's one of the things that I think it's really, what you see is during the times that you've come you're here, you see problems exist, like you know, Mr. Ballinger just said, and there's things that you guys can recommend and and see what chew on it and say, what can we do about this to make it more efficient? And you know, so we don't lose sight. And like that, one thing that tonight, um that's a simple thing. But that's one of the thing of the kind of underground stuff is really important so that you're protecting the other landowners around it. That's what my reasoning for asking is to protect. And so the city doesn't come, get people coming back, why didn't you do this? Why am I not, why do I have water coming in my yard now? Do anything.
Great. All right, well, on behalf of the board and planning department, city, I just say thanks, you know, for all your service over many, many years. You know, I don't even remember how many of this.
Well, I really enjoyed myself.
Uh you know, thanks a lot. Appreciate it. All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And for the last time, Ed Weber?
Yes.